Let's call the March 5th, 2012 Special Meeting of the Frankford Board of Commissioners to Order. Would the ... Please call the roll.
Fisher Turner.
Here.
Mr. Hayden.
Here.
Fisher Turner. Mr. May.
Here.
Mayor Graham.
Here. So we have a quorum. Okay, the purpose for the special meeting today is to have a personnel hearing. I'd like to have Commissioner, I mean, City Manager going to sort of frame some of this.
Thank you, Mayor. Of course, the purpose today is to hear grievance from seven firefighters, which concerns the decision to postpone the 2012 promotional examinations. And I would ask the individuals who are concerned here, you have the option of having an open or a closed meeting. Do you have a preference on that?
Yes.
Yes, please.
My name's Brad Case, Sergeant Frankford Fire. We can have it open. That'd be fine. We've all discussed it. Open is fine.
Okay. The second question is, have the individuals decided, do you want a spokesperson or do you want to speak individually?
I'll be speaking today on behalf of the seven.
Very good. For the sake of brevity, we would like to ask any subsequent speakers not to prevent, not to repeat what Sergeant Case states. But if you do have any new or different information, we would be interested in hearing that. Always make sure you accurately state your concerns. So the meeting is open and, Mayor?
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Williams. Okay, we have a spokesperson for those who have filed the grievance. Identify yourself, please, for the record.
My name's Brad Case. I'm a Sergeant at Frankford Fire. I am one of the original seven that filed, I guess filed the grievance against the decision the Commission made to postpone 2012 promotional testing. Basically, what I'm up here to do is kind of give our side of the story and kind of give why we have filed this. And so I'll kind of get into it. Every time we have a promotional process, there's a process that we all have to abide by. I.e., we have certain books that we have to study from. It's given in a list form prior to everybody testing. We have a 45-day notice prior to the test. And then there is a deadline that we all have to have our application in to be able to test. Having said that, all applicants this time, there were, I think, 35 applicants that were aware of this, that went through the entire, everything that was asked of them to do. They had all their paperwork in. They were ready to test. We all knew what the requirements were going to be to test. You know, I understand there are some revisions that are to be made with Chapter 40, the new Chapter 40. We all understood the old Chapter 40 was what we were going under. We had all met those requirements that had signed up to test. We knew what the weight of the scores were. I know there have been some discussion about possibly changing the scores midstream. We were all under the impression that we were going under the old Chapter 40, or the currently adopted Chapter 40. And we all knew what the weight of the scores were, and that was going to be the outcome of the test. In saying that, I just like the panel to know that there's a lot of personal sacrifice that goes along with one of these promotional tests. Myself, a lot of the guys also that have tested, some of the guys haven't tested and didn't understand what it was about. I'm sure they know now. Countless hours for months at a time preparing for this. You know, this is what ultimately puts our kids through college, promotional testing. We don't have, you know, we really don't have any other means in place right now to get a raise. You know, we got a COVID this year, which was great. But other than that, this is the only way that we're going to get a raise right now, you know, short future. So when we sit down to think, hey, I would like to go through this promotional process, not only are we furthering our careers, we're looking for retirement and beyond. Because ultimately, this is where this is going. So there's a lot of personal sacrifice going along with this. Usually, when, I say usually, when we test, we know at the beginning of the year or just prior to the beginning of the year, roughly when the promotional tests are going to be held. Having said that, the beginning of the year or usually the end of the year and the very beginning of the year is when all of the people at the fire department, and I'm sure it's like that probably in the police department, maybe not, but we pick vacation days, we schedule, if you have, I know there's some guys that have some surgeries coming up. They have done all this around this promotional testing. You know, sometimes there are some unforeseen things that come up, and that is what it is. But for the most part, there are guys that pick, you know, we have to pick our vacation well in advance, and we all know. And usually from administration that comes across in enough time that we know, hey, listen, you know, don't be picking vacation, don't pick vacation picks around this time because this is when we're going to test for promotional process. A lot of guys fulfill, especially this year, are fulfilling city, the city has asked some people to help or put on classes for the city. I.e., we have an EMT class starting. So all these dates are pre-scheduled. We already have, I believe we already have a class roster and everybody, I think it's starting tonight. Is that correct? EMT class is starting tonight. So there may be a couple of instructors that already know, hey, listen, you know, I know we're testing these dates. You know, I've already got it set up that I'm teaching these dates. And now that we've postponed the test, that may or may not have affected on that. The paramedic class is the same thing. We have a paramedic class that's getting ready to start for our department. And that goes along the same lines. One of the big things that kind of bothers those involved is, I'll kind of go back to, we did everything that was asked of us. We signed the paperwork and had it in on time. We studied off the approved reading list. We either met requirements that were asked of us to make as far as having certain certificates or going to classes and to say, hey, I have been through this class. This is what you asked me to do. And three days prior to the test, the test is canceled. So it's kind of, it kind of turns into a morale issue as far as that's concerned. Not to mention that was 10 days after, that was 10 days after the application deadline. And then we get into, I think it was December 20th, was the 45-day notice that we should have prior to the test, the written test. You know, majority of us feel that had the revised Chapter 40 or the question come up pertaining to revising Chapter 40 a long time ago, say December, or, you know, obviously not three days prior to the written test, we may have had a different tune. Maybe not, but it sure makes a big difference when, three days prior to the test, we turn up and we can't test. Especially after, you know, my wife made the comment, she said, you know, she said, it's hard for people to understand that, and this, I'm just speaking personally right now, it's hard to understand that at 8:00, you put your daughters to bed and you go, you know, you go in the bedroom and you study for two hours. And, you know, we don't get that time. You know, and obviously, there's preparation, there's sacrifice goes along with it. But if you've never tested through this process, majority of people don't understand that. So it's a really, really big deal. Let's see. I think, and this is what it is, I don't, I'm not going to comment too much about this, but I think had this been an agenda item and not necessarily brought up under old business, I think you would have had a lot more participation in people getting up and saying, you know, hey, we agree or hey, we disagree about this, the night that the vote was made. You know, and obviously, stuff like this happens. You know, it was a city commission meeting, and it was brought up under old business, and ultimately, the vote was made. But I think you would have been surprised. There probably would have been a lot more people down here, more interested and possibly voicing opinions and, you know, maybe that would have made a difference. Maybe that would have made a difference. I think some of this may or may not have been done under some misleading information or somebody not necessarily understanding what was discussed. We had a lot of crew meetings discussing the revisions that were to come in Chapter 40, the new Chapter 40 that is to be adopted evidently in the future. I think had there been some clarifications, had somebody not understood something walking out of a meeting, I think if a phone call or two had been made, possibly there may have been a different outcome. You know, this may not even have been an issue as far as the test postponement. I guess that is what it is. I can't speak for the people that didn't understand or, you know, maybe it was just a clarification needed, not necessarily not understanding. Basically, all we're asking is reinstate the test under the current Chapter 40 that we all completed our paperwork on, we all met the requirements, we all met all the deadlines. And just let us go through with the test. You know, we understand that it's a system that, could it be revised? Absolutely. But have we been doing business under it for a while? Absolutely. Did we think we were going under this old Chapter 40? Absolutely. So I don't think there was any concern as far as that goes for the 35 that had signed up to take the test. If I may, I've actually got, I've got one more thing I actually want to, and I've got some copies I will give you all. We had a petition that went around that was in favor of the grievance process that we had filed. And I've got copies for you all if I can dig back through my paperwork. And this is 40 members of the fire department. Not necessarily every person is testing. There are a lot of people that are testing. I've got actual numbers for you guys in just a second. And if you'll look, I think we made the copies after I did this. But if you'll look, the checkmarks outside the names are the people that are testing. The names that do not have checkmarks are the people that are concerned, firefighters of the department. And they, there may have been a couple more that just because of logistics and timing that were in agreeance, they just weren't able to sign the petition. So, you know, it's, when you look at it, that's pretty much majority of the fire department that kind of feel, you know, some, yes, I was testing. I wish we could have tested. You know, this was a long time coming. I was looking forward to, not necessarily getting it out of the way, but at least getting into the process. And then there are some that say, you know what, you know, this affects me because it affects you, you know, and that's what we're in the business for. So having said that, you know, if you guys have any questions, I'll try to answer accordingly.
Okay, thank you very much, Sergeant. Just to emphasize what you're saying, in the agreements, what you say that you are requesting as a result of this, is that the current 2012 promotional process be reinstated to allow all those that met the following deadline on February 17th, 2012, as required in the Information Bulletin of December 20th, 2011, to continue the testing process under the currently approved Chapter 40 Code of Ordinances as soon as testing company can be rescheduled.
That's correct.
That's what you are asking.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay, now, I want to make sure, I want us to be clear about it. Now, are there any other, before we have the Commission be able to ask any question or what have you, are there any other persons here that feel would you like to add something other than what has been submitted? You have one person, okay? Will you come, please, through that? And identify yourself for the record.
Brad Durst, Sergeant Frankford Fire. First off, just for clarification, I know people do schedule around testing, so on and so forth. Just for the record, no one was notified that the test was going to be on March 1st until February 22nd. That was when that first come out. That was in a memo. I believe that was Assistant Chief Flung. Got that in an email. I agree with Sergeant Case. This is a very big deal. It is very big. I put my time in and tested as well. My suggestion to that is, is because it is a big deal, do it right. I come to you all a year ago, filed a problem resolution form. Everyone afterwards agreed that the process needed to be tweaked, fixed, whatever term that you want to use. To test under that would be hypocritical if we test under the old system that we said was broke. I think you all made a very difficult decision in a time that it's going to affect some people. Anytime you make change, like Mayor Graham said that last year during my problem resolution form, I understand it is going to affect some people. But I understand, I think you need to do the right thing. I think somebody was assigned a task a year ago, and that task failed. Also on this list, I've handed you a letter of support as well from throughout our department. That was passed around. There were some that I had spoke with as far as pertaining to the other petition that was unclear on what exactly they had signed. I do agree that there were some that said, look, I'm not even testing, but this guy I do feel sorry for, and I think he's put forth the time. And I do agree with that. I think there's three individuals that it's going to affect that probably won't get to test because of the new Chapter 40, because they don't have the required amount of time in. In our meetings, we all pretty much agreed that you should be here for four years anyway. On that list, you're going to find several new guys that haven't even been on the department for six months that have signed it. I feel it's very unfair. I think you put those guys in a bad situation when you bring a petition to them who, for lack of better words, haven't even earned their keep at the department. They're still on probation. They're going to go with whatever's sitting in front of them. They actually don't even know what they're signing, so. That's all I have. I appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Can I speak again?
Yes, please.
I just want to clarify on this. The, when the date went out for the test, and it's actually in your own pocket, it's, I want to say maybe the sixth page back. It's titled Frankford Fire Emergency Emergency Services Information Bulletin. It's got a date of December 20th. If you look down where it says testing dates, it says recommends for Sergeant, Lieutenant, and Captain candidates will take place on March 1st, 2012. So that clarifies when the actual test date come out, part of the 45 days prior to the written test. Also, just kind of want to throw out here, under the current Chapter 40 since 2000, there were 54 members of this department right now that were hired. 54 members. Eight since, one of 2011. Promotions since 2000, under the current Chapter 40, there were 93 promotions, 11 from one of 2011. So, you know, Chapter 40 could use some changes, but let's look at, it's done very well for 12 years. You know, we got a lot of good guys on the department. So I just want to, I just want everybody to remember that although changes are good, it's worked for a long time. It's worked for a long time.
Right, thank you.
And that's all.
Okay, now, Commissioner, if Commissioner wants to have, I think you two addressing quite, making comments or asking questions, is Commissioner Wilder?
I do have some questions. I've got some technical questions for, I guess, for the chief. But first, in regards to, regards to the rank and file, I just want to clarify, you know, clarify these dates. I know a lot of this is in writing already. But you're saying you all were given a heads-up on the March 1st deadline on December 20th?
It's in, it should be in your, it should be in your pocket there. I said it was the sixth page. It's, I'm sure.
I'm here to go grab my packet, actually. I've been, oh, shoot, man.
It's about the eighth page.
Oh, sure.
Okay.
Sorry, I've just been working with the digital copy.
It should be the first page after our original grievance statement that we actually typed up and sent in.
Right. I haven't seen a hard date on when you all were informed that the old or current Chapter 40 would apply.
Right.
That was one of the questions I was going to ask. Brad Durst might have answered it already. But was anybody told that before February 22nd?
To our knowledge, there would have been no changes. There would have been no changes at that point. We, everybody understood that we were testing this way. We followed all the guidelines that were asked of us to turn the paperwork in.
I'm trying to, I'm just trying to get a grip on when people came to that understanding.
Okay, all right. It's on that same page. Thank you. I'm on it.
Okay.
It's under eligibility requirements about midway down. Its eligibility requirements are listed in City Frankford Ordinance, Chapter 40. I actually didn't see that, but it kind of solidifies it.
Okay. So that, and, okay, so that would be considered a defect or notification that the?
It would indeed. It would indeed.
For the sake of discussion, can we call, can we call them the old rules and the new rule?
Absolutely. Sure.
I think that you all have, you know, a legitimate case for a grievance here. This whole thing, this whole thing goes back a ways. The Commission, about a year ago, a little over a year ago, started stating publicly, and has stated publicly and repeatedly since then that these changes would be made to Chapter 40 before the next promotional process starts. And that's also what we've been assured by the chief repeatedly, even as recently as this January. But it sounds like you're saying that he was communicating something different to you. And it looks according to this like that's the case.
This is what we understood. We were testing.
Sure.
Under. Unfortunately, I can't speak, I can't speak any other way.
I agree that that is pretty unfair to you all, and that this whole situation is unfair to a lot of people. Was it ever, did anyone ever communicate to you that the Commission's position for the past, for the past year would be that these changes would be made before the next promotional process started?
Not to me personally.
That was never formally communicated to the department in any way?
Not that I remember. Not to me personally.
And it was never communicated to the department that the chief has repeatedly assured the Commission that these changes will be made before the next promotional process started?
Not to me personally. No, sir.
Wow. Okay, I've got some technical questions. And these might be for, these would either be for the chief or Assistant Chief regarding how and when, just to get an understanding of what our options really are at this point. Because I don't know if we could get the testing company in here tomorrow, for example. But I think we need an idea of what, if we were to grant this grievance, accommodate the grievance. I think we need some clear idea of what that practically would mean.
Well, something I should have included, if I may, before I take a seat. As soon as possible is pretty much.
Understood.
Right. I didn't know if I verbalized that.
Sure.
Just on our behalf, on our side.
But in order to make an informed decision, we're going to need to know when as soon as possible is and what that really means. Whoever can answer the question?
I'm sorry. What's your question?
When is as soon as possible?
We've been in communication with the testing company since the decision last week. They're telling us now that they could get back in here on March 20th to do, to start the process again. That'll be the written test date. They actually gave us four dates in March, April, and May. Earliest being March 20th, 21st, and 22nd, actually.
That answers my question. Thank you. I guess I've already got some thoughts, but if other folks have any questions, I'm happy to simmer.
I don't have any questions.
Mr. Hayden?
Just.
Didn't Commissioner make?
I think the bottom line we have here is just a real failure to communicate. And I think that doesn't come from the staff. It comes from the department head. And I think you guys were profiling the grievance and letting us hear your side. When I left the meeting the other night, I can assure you that I felt, I don't know if heartache's the right word, but if I was in your shoes and I knew I had a test coming up and someone just took it away from me and not knowing how much longer to have to wait to re-study, I'd be pretty devastated as an employee. So I'm sorry for that, for the 35 that applied for the test. But somebody still needs to be held accountable.
Commissioner May?
I was just going to say, just based, it's hard for me because I feel very close to all the personnel in the fire department, top to bottom. And it's painful to have to try to make decisions that make some happy and some not happy. But I guess for me, looking at, when I look at this Information Bulletin that was sent, or posted in December of 2011, where it spells out the procedures and eligibility requirements, and then on page two, it talks about the test question will be based on the SOP in place 45 days prior to the test, which would be in January 16, 2012. At that point, we had not, the Commission hadn't had any changes to. At that point, we had not, the commission hadn't had any, um, changes to chapter forty actually drafted to look at, to even give a first reading on it. I don't think the fire department had any choice, but to go under the, under the current chapter forty, which is still in place. And as we know, ordinances take two readings, and just a timeframe, I don't think would have, would really have allowed, but based on that, I would just make a motion that we rescind the decision made, or the vote made on, um, Monday, whatever the day it was, twenty-seventh?
Exactly.
On February twenty-seventh, we rescind that action, which would, in effect, put the current SOP, well, because that SOP's still in place, and so is chapter forty, it just puts everything back to where it was, and then, uh, further say that the testing company be contacted to come in and offer the test as soon as possible, which according to the chief, may be March twenty-first, twenty-second. So my, my motion is that we rescind the action taken on February twenty-seventh.
Okay.
Which in fact puts it back.
Okay, you've got a motion, you just said it.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Heden, you have more discussion? Commissioner Wilder?
Um, this is a tough, this is a tough call, and I think everybody, I think everybody has a legitimate grievance, frankly, on both sides. Um, and we knew, when making this decision last week, that we were damned if we do, and damned if we don't, that we were going to agree, uh, that we were going to agree with plenty of folks either way. I can't, well, I think I can speak for the rest of the commission, when I say that our, our intention, this whole time, in, in discussing chapter forty over the last year, has, had, our intention is to do what's right by the department, and to do what's right by you all. And even the decision we made last week, particularly in the long term, I think was part of an effort to, to do that. I understand that some folks feel that, uh, um, that they're being punished, or they've been, you know, that they were punished last week for, uh, for just going by the rules in place, and, and by doing what they were, they were told. I can, I can assure you that, that the decision last week wasn't part of an effort to punish anybody at all, uh, for anything, and yet, I absolutely understand that perspective, and that grievance, and I really am sorry, uh, that this whole thing has, has become such a mess, is, let's give it just a little bit of a timeline, I mean, we started discussing this last January, or January before last, uh, over a year ago. Last January, the commission and, um, and even Randy, even our, our human resources director, uh, agreed that chapter forty was outdated, and, uh, and needed some changes. Um, and we felt at that time, obviously, that we were giving ourselves and staff plenty of time to, uh, get those changes in effect before the next promotional process started. Um, and we were assured repeatedly, over the course of the past year, that, uh, that was about to happen, that was about to happen. We, I guess from my perspective, the commission's very clear position this whole time is that the, this process would not go forward under the, again, under the old rules, um, which is why, in a sense, I, I feel that we've also been aggrieved, that the commission's also been aggrieved by these circumstances. And it, it's frustrating as this is to me, uh, I think I just, I think, I think we do need to acknowledge that, uh, what we asked for just didn't happen. We can't go back in time. We can't go back in time and do this six months ago, when it should have been done. Uh, you know, we can't go back and, and make the changes six months ago, so that everybody would know what to expect, and be on the same page going forward. I wish we could, but we can't. Um, and in light of, uh, in light of the fact that it was formally communicated to the department, that, that the promotional process would move forward under the old changes, I am inclined to, uh, to reverse our decision, and to, um, and to let the process get back on track, under the, the old or current rules, this time around, with the very clear understanding that we are going to make, we are going to make these changes to chapter forty, and, uh, well, and I'll be damned if they're not in place by the time twenty thirteen rolls around. It shouldn't have, we shouldn't even be, we shouldn't even need to have this conversation. And I understand that, uh, some folks feel that the decision last week was unfair, and I understand that some folks are going to feel that the decision to reverse this is unfair, and frankly, I think you're all right. I think it is unfair. But I think all we can do is, uh, cut our losses, accept the fact that this didn't get done in time, uh, move forward, and, uh, make sure it doesn't happen again. I'm sorry, everybody, I really am.
Okay, call the rule, please.
Commissioner Wilder?
Yes.
Commissioner Heden?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Mayor Graham?
Uh, yes, so the, um, motion is approved. Okay, that, uh, entertain a motion for a gentleman? All right, um-
I'll second it.
You got second? Okay.
Commissioner Wilder?
Yes.
Commissioner Heden?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Mayor Graham?
Yeah, good gentleman.
Can you add this to the rest of your mon- it's the other-
That's my foot, my leg, my butt, and leaves.
Wait. So I can read it at that.
We missed you.
Is that, uh, you're not asking, I have another question.
He just said, he said email out. Uh, a couple hours ago. I was with that girl, I can't, I can't just say. I met with her today, she was built for sure. Human rights commissioner. She said she didn't know. Call the city, we'll call them. I'm going to, you know where we're going?
You see this to her?
I have my check, of course, it's always ten, so the million dollars don't-
I told her I didn't know.
I don't know, I don't know, just, don't worry.
I have my check, of course, it's always ten, so the million dollars don't-
I told her I didn't know.
Exactly, exactly.
I don't know, I don't know, just, don't worry.
Is it really?